Are you looking to stay active and healthy in the comfort of your own home? CNET has a variety of exercise programs designed to help you stay fit and increase strength and flexibility. Strength training, moving freely, and zesty chair exercises all work on improving flexibility, ease of movement, and core body strength. Gentle yoga is a specifically designed yoga program that is easy on the joints and easy for beginners. Chair yoga has been created for those with limited mobility. CNET's exercise programs air several times each week on Channel 98 CETV. For specific airing times, please visit cnetone.org and click on CNET Schedules, or call CNET at 814-238-5031. Nothing good on TV? You're just not watching the right channels.
You're watching CNET, Center County's Government and Educational Access Network.
Welcome, everybody, to Belfont Borough Council Work Session. No council action is taken during the work session. As a reminder, try to remember to turn on your microphone every time. President Bernier had asked me to do the trivia questions this year, so for the first one, what is the official state song of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania? Did anybody know we had a song? I did not either. It is called "Pennsylvania." The song was written and composed by Eddie Curry and Ronnie Bonner and serves as the official song for all public purposes. State Representative Oliver introduced the bill for the song, and it was adopted by the General Assembly and signed into law by Governor Robert P. Casey on November 29, 1990. You can look that up on YouTube. It is on YouTube.
Doug Johnson sing that for us, please?
I think he could.
Sing the state song, Pennsylvania.
Oh, sure.
We'll play it later. Okay, we'll get to our items. The first one is Missoula Park for the Dog Park. Mr. Seraphin, would you like to speak?
So it was three months ago when I first stood here clutching a petition advocating for an off-leash dog park to be created in our beloved town. Today, I return with a little bit of an update. The petition has gathered 555 signatures online. Anything online, you know where they're from. 115 of those are people who list Belfont as their address. I've also collected an additional 76 signatures on paper in the borough. So that brings the total of people with direct ties to Belfont to above 190. I want to clarify one thing. My initial email, my initial contact with this council, I suggested that Missoula Park would be a potentially convenient, expeditious, and cost-effective location for an off-leash dog park, but that was not meant to be a all-or-nothing claim. This council has the authority to choose whatever borough-owned space they choose. Missoula Park was just a suggestion of ease. Also, maybe we could partner with the fire department. They have Lambert Hall, and a large space that's already fenced in, so a partnership with them might work as well. I ardently believe that the establishment of an off-leash park in Belfont holds the potential to help rejuvenate our little town. Beyond providing a sanctuary for our four-legged friends, I really think it will offer another compelling reason for the residents of neighboring municipalities to come to Belfont and spend their money here. Every time I go to a dog park, I stop for coffee, or lunch, or something. I spend money, no matter where I go. Why not have them spend it in Belfont? I'm committed to contributing towards the cost involved with creating this off-leash park as well. Once approved by Borough Council, I will change my focus to fundraising. Businesses, organizations, and individuals are kind of hesitant to donate to a cause that has not yet received approval. I've gotten a few small donations, but nothing noteworthy. And that's basically it. I just, I think that there's an overwhelming desire to have an off-leash park for the thousand dogs in the surrounding area that would bring them into Belfont and have them spend their money here, help us raise our tax revenues.
Any discussion?
Yes. At one point, Mr. Seraphin had said that no one from the council had reached out to him via email about the dog park. I reached out to him before he came in and did a presentation to us. I asked him several questions. I too am interested in a dog park in Belfont, but it has to be done properly. It has to be researched. There are things that have to happen before you can actually come in, or should come in, and present to council. You need a plan. I posed these questions to him in the email. He has not responded, and this was back, well, however many months ago, he said, three months ago. So this is not something that is very easily decided upon. There is a lot of things to think about, and at this point, I don't want to move forward with it because of that. Now, if he gets us more information and answers some of the questions I posed, that's different. But again, there are some things, one in particular, that really concerns me, and that is, who will maintain this dog park? That is the one stumbling point that I come upon. State College, Tudic Park, they have Park and Rec to do it. They took it over for them. I don't think the borough can probably afford to have someone maintain this dog park, and that's my one stumbling block, because that is one of the reasons I actually ran for council to propose that. So until we have that answer, which I think is the most important one, I think it just has to sit and percolate.
Thank you, Shawna. Anyone else? Debbie?
I think my concern would be coming up with a really appropriate spot for this. When Missoula Park was originally mentioned as a location, that's immediately adjacent to a residential neighborhood, and I don't know that we had any input from the residents of Reynolds Avenue. And that park currently is open to the public for any use whatsoever, but to turn it into a specific use would deny the residents of that area and other members of our community access to that open space. And as Shawna mentioned, Center Region Parks and Rec does maintain Tudic Park, and on their website, there is mention of additional dog parks being developed in Oak Hall, the Oak Hall Regional Park, and Whitehall Road Regional Park, part of their Phase One development. So these ideas are out there, and they're being pursued by other communities, but they're all under the umbrella of Parks and Rec and not the individual municipalities.
Sure.
Sorry for not replying to the email. I never saw it. So I'll go back and check and see if it ended up expanding or something like that. Concerned for Reynolds Avenue residents, till recently, Missoula Park was the only park that allowed dogs. So dogs have always been at Missoula Park. Once council allowed dogs, we go to all of the other parks, and Missoula Park is no longer anything special. It's just another park. Even though the dog park signs are still on, it's largely a real event at that point, but the dog park sign is still there, pointing down Reynolds Avenue to Missoula Park. Again, that's why I thought expeditious and easiest place was cost-effective, but it used to be the only place dogs allowed.
This is Ralph. I just want to add, the speaker is correct. All the parks do allow dogs. However, they must be on a leash, and even when we had Missoula Park, the dog had to be on a leash. Several years ago, we had a complaint from a resident there at Reynolds Avenue that a dog unleashed came up to her and scared her. You know, it was just a big dog. So Dawn and I met with her and talked about enforcing the leash law at that time. So just to clarify, all parks do allow dogs on leashes. That is correct. I think we would have concerns, as everybody on council knows, our parks budget is, I'll say nearly 100% funded by real estate taxes. There is no money for staff. We cut grass and all that, but there's no recreational staff, there's no maintenance staff to speak of, other than grass cutters in the summertime. So if we were to get into something, establishing and maintaining a dog park, it would mean a tax increase to the residents who pay the parks tax. I just want to point that out to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Rita?
I just have a question about liability, too. Like, if a dog were to bite somebody, who's going to be responsible for that? Because I'm assuming there could be some legal ramifications.
That would be the dog owner. I think it would be a good idea, I don't think Tudic Park does this, but I think it would be a good idea to install cameras, both at a parking area and at the park itself, so that you could have that information to pursue. Sometimes they would just leave, and you would have nothing to identify the person or the dog.
Thank you. Anyone else? Randy, please.
Yeah, in respect to the dogs coming into the park, I made that motion probably back in 2016, somewhere around there, and it was to allow the dogs to come in, because we had a lot of foot traffic in Towne Ranch Park and people going from one end to the other, but for a while, they had to go outside the park to get to where they were going to go. And so we allowed it, we brought it in, but it was very little cost. I mean, most of it is the bags, the poo bags, and there'll be a water fountain over there in the figure-eight area at some point next spring, the things like that. And that's something that was provided, it's not, no money off the borough there. And I'm concerned about, you know, the cost of putting the park together, the cost about sustainability of the park. Who's going to, who's going to address the issues when people start complaining that the dogs aren't being cleaned up afterward? We, as council, do not have the ability to go back and look at cameras, to look at things that may be happening that shouldn't be happening in accordance with dogs, and I feel that what we have right now with the leash law, and that's in our ordinance, that we stay with that.
Thank you, Randy. Anybody else? I looked at this a little bit differently and did some research and looked into dog trainers and behavioralists, and pretty much across the board, they said these were not a good idea for many reasons. I have, I think, 10 pages here, which I'm not going to read to you, but the main ones were dog behavior, and we don't know how our dogs are going to behave when they are approached by another dog. We think we do sometimes, but it's not always the case, and that sets dogs up for dog fights, injuries, long-term problems from being attacked by a dog, those types of things that I would like, certainly would not like to have happen. There's also a lot of diseases that dogs carry. There would be no way to monitor who has vaccines, who does not. The issue of cleaning up after the dogs, the feces also carries a lot of problems if other dogs get into it. It is my experience, even in downtown Belfont, walking around, most dog owners are good, but I would say at least once a week, I run into somebody that has not cleaned up after their dogs. So after I read all this, and I can make this available to anybody, I can send it by email, I don't think it's a very good idea at this time either. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to Pine Street. You're welcome to come up, sir. Would you like to come up and speak?
A lot of breath, we had a, a truck stuck in front of the house. It was a trailer truck, came up, and they, I guess it's Pendot does the cleaning? They didn't really do a good job on the coming ups, and the other side wasn't plowed. So he got stuck, and my neighbors and I dug him out, and took some effort, but he finally was able to get up the hill. But the reason I came and I contacted Joanne to begin with is that the, there's no speed signs, except for one speed sign on Pine Street, which is at the top of the hill, and there's none coming down, and there's none on the other side of the street of all. And so drivers think it's the Audubon, and they just speed, you know, and if I needed, you know, videos, I could take videos, because you could, I mean, it's not, you know, the exception to the rule. It is the rule, you know, most of them speed about beyond 25 miles an hour. And I think one of the reasons I talked to my neighbors, and they said, is because their street is so narrow, and of course, trucks go on there, so when they come up and they see if there's a, you know, there's nobody there, then they put the pedal to the metal, and they just speed up the hill, so they don't get stuck, because beyond where I live, 383 Pine Street, there's parking on the downside, you know, and so it gets even narrower. And so if, even two full-size pickup trucks have problems passing each other at that point, so one has to stay, and then one will go like, you know, close, pretty close by to the other. And in cases, if there's a Cattigo bus, or if there's a school bus, you know, some big vehicle, then one of them has to pull over into like a parking space, and hopefully there's a parking space there, and I've seen them do that. So that's a real issue, I think, and I was really surprised to find, you know, going up and down, that there weren't any speed signs. And then Stony Batter, which is just, you know, a stone's throw from my backyard there, also the same thing. There's no speed signs. There might have been one. There was a, there was a sign about halfway up, not a sign, but there's a post halfway up that's pushed back, and there might have been a sign, it's about a 12-foot post pushed back, it maybe got hit by the top of a truck or something, I don't know, but there's no sign on there. So there's no signage, so people don't even know that it's supposed to be 25 miles an hour, which I was told that was the limit, you know. And I sent some pictures to Joanne, I said, I showed her that the nearest sign is past the old mill on Axeman, which says 25 miles an hour. So people don't know the speed limit, and I think that signage would really help with the noise, with the safety, and also pollution, because it really, you know, when they start going up, I mean, the diesel trucks, they're really billow out, a lot of smoke. And the same thing on Stony Batter, and I'm not sure why they speed up, I mean, I understand why on Pine Street, but I'm not sure why they speed up on Stony Batter, other than the fact that they're coming down the hill at 35 miles an hour. There's no stoplight, really, everybody says, they did stoplight there by the intersection, and there's none. So they just speed up there, and then when they get halfway up, for some reason, they want to continue speeding, and then they start to accelerate and go up. And the other thing I would suggest is that, that's a safety issue, is that once the vehicles come up on Stony Batter, some turn down. I know Cattigo buses do that, turn down, take me home. But that's kind of dangerous, really, turning there, because they can't see as you come around, because there's all cars parked over there. So that's an accident waiting to happen over there, so they should have like no U-turn over there. And then one thing that happened recently is they were working on a water main that was down at the end of, whether the sharp turn is, and they put a orange barrel, it's the kind that looks like a wedding cake, you know, it goes up like that, and on top there's a reflector. I think it's a good idea to keep it there, because there's no light, it lights all around that turn is, and somebody could go off the road, because it's a space between the house and where the guardrail starts, and there's just, you know, empty space where a car would go right over the hill. So that's the, I think it's suggestions I have about that, but I think the speed signs are the most important thing, and also that those are, that the speed limit is enforced, because if, yeah, the sign's there, but nobody's really watching out, or going to pull a car over and give them a ticket so they know it's going to be enforced, then the signs are not going to really help much.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? Joanne?
Yeah, I met with Mr. Panko for a good half hour in October, and we'd been communicating back and forth, and I told him at the time that Pine Street is a state highway, so we have no control over what is there, but we can make recommendations to Pendot of how to possibly improve this site. And I also suggested to him that he send us some ideas, knowing what's happening on a daily basis, to help improve the environment. And some of the things that he didn't mention was putting a concave mirrors at the bend on Pine Street, down at the bottom of the hill, so that the people coming up the hill can see what's coming, what is coming down the hill, and at people crossing the street. He has had a couple of incidences where he's almost been hit, because people are speeding, trying at that point. He also suggested, and I think this is a very good idea if we can get Pendot to do it, is to put a concave mirror at the top of Stony Batter, at the stop sign across the street near where Spring Street turns left, so that people can see around those parked cars. I've been there many times, and he's right, you have to pull out almost in the middle of the street before you can see if there's anybody coming or not. Regarding the speeding, the speed signs entering Belfont, there is one nearer to the bend in the road, but it's a cautionary 20 mile-per-hour sign. And with, as I understand from Pendot, that means you should, you should consider this, but it's not mandatory, because the yellow signs are just a warning. So I don't know how we might deal with that, because personally, I would prefer 20, but I do know that the state law says that roads of that size, it's a 25 mile-per-hour, so we might probably need to discuss that with Pendot. He also has said he wanted a traffic light at Water, Stony Batter, and Mill Street, and explained to him that we've been working with Penn Tap for five or six years to put that on their schedule, so that we can improve that. And at this point, I don't think there's much we can do until Pendot puts it on Penn Tap, and we get the study done to help improve that intersection. We all agree that that's a bad intersection with the way, the five different roads, Phoenix Avenue, Valentine Road, and these three roads that he mentioned are kind of, with the railroad all there. It's a congested, complicated, unsafe intersection. He did also ask for eminent domain on the east side of the street to widen the road. That, I think, is probably a non-starter, but that could be considered. And he did suggest something that I don't know how that might work to Pendot, is painting speed limits on the street with reflective paint in addition to the stop signs. I don't know at that, this point, whether or not that would be a borough maintenance issue, or Pendot would take care of that. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments? Questions? Doug?
I've lived in this town all of my life, except for a couple years away, but anyhow, Pine Street has always been the way it is today. We can put as many signs as we want there. I think it's going to boil down to enforcement of that street, but it's a very difficult street to enforce speed regulations on. You're not going to change truck traffic, it's going to happen. The good news is that the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, is about, in the process of clarifying monies that it will be on the tip transportation plan. And the good news is, it looks like there's a real likely possibility that up to $6 million will be assigned to the Phoenix Avenue, Mill Street, Stony Batter, railroad crossing intersection, along with the bridge that goes over Logan Branch. So what's happening is, that $6 million probably will not cover the project, but it's a start in the direction, and they're hoping to include the reconstruction of the Logan Street Bridge. So I'm happy to take any moves to improve what's there, but as in everything, it's going to take some time. We've been working on this improvement, the Phoenix Avenue Railroad Street, or Mill Street, Water Street intersection, for more than 10 years, and we're finally making some progress on it, with some money being allotted to it, hopefully. If the Coordinating Committee approves, it's been recommended by the Technical Committee, it goes out for stakeholders' comments, and then hopefully in April, the Coordinating Committee will approve the money that's been designated for that intersection. That may, or I hope it does help and relieve some of the stress that's on Pine Street.
Thank you, Doug. Anyone else? Debbie?
Yes, I think it was at least three years ago, we looked into having the stop sign at the bottom of Pine Street, where it intersects with Mill Street, changed so that it was a complete stop and not a, you know, if you're making, if you're going straight down Mill Street, you had to stop, but if you're going up Pine Street, you could just keep going. And I'm not sure what happened to that project. I know it's right on the Spring Township line, and that was part of the problem.
Yes, I'd have to look back in our notes to see what happened with that particular intersection. I know we also looked at Pine, or, yeah, Pine and Stony Batter, and I can recall the emails from Pendot saying they did not want to have a stop on Pine because of possible rear-end accidents.
Right.
I don't recall what they said about Pine and Mill.
This was specifically down at the intersection of Pine and Mill Street.
Yeah, I remember that one. That was a little, like you said, probably three years ago, and it was in Spring Township, so I don't know. I think we notified Spring, but I don't recall the outcome. I can go back and check our notes.
I don't know if that would, I know we're not supposed to use stop signs to, as traffic calming devices, but making it a complete stop would at least reduce the speed a little bit of the vehicles coming up the hill.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. The drafts for elected officials for training and travel policies.
I mean, I put this together, I tried to listen to comments I heard from time to time in the fall, and tried to craft something. Of course, we borrow things, we don't start from scratch, so I looked at other municipal policies for elected officials and borrowed pieces here and there. So I put the draft together, looking for comments. We do have it as an action item with or without amendments on tonight, in tonight's business meeting.
Does anyone have comments? Questions? Joanne?
First of all, I generally like the policy. I do have a couple of questions regarding the ADA accommodations, because of interactions that I've had when I've been dealing with travel. I was previously told when I was, when I went to the administrative assistant to do my ADA, my hotel reservations, that my accommodations were a bit too complicated, and she had to... and she had suggested that I make the reservations on myself, by myself, and let her know. Would this still be possible? Is the first question.
Well, the way the policy is written, I tried to have some wiggle room. We said as much as possible, we would use our administrative assistant to make the reservations. We do have some language in there about the ADA coordinator being involved. I would like to try that route first and see if we can handle the situation. We are, as you know, kind of in a new era where we'll have an ADA coordinator involved. We did not have that before. So I would like to attempt to try handling everyone's reservations first. Now, if we run into unforeseen problems, there is a little bit of wiggle room and we would maybe make some notes, make some improvements or whatever, but we'd at least attempt to try to resolve the problems first and go from there.
Okay, well, that sounds good to me. The second question is related. There are some times when the, because of the accommodations that need to be made, by the time we can get through them, the hotel that is, that is contracted with has, has had full reservations. That's happened to me twice since I've been on council. So it doesn't happen very often. And then, so as a result, I've had to go around and try to find alternative housing that's within the same price range. And that sometimes has taken me, and I've, two, three, four hours. And I think that's, would be a burden on our administrative assistant when something like that happens. Like I said, it's not very often. So if that should occur for anyone, whether it's an ADA or a general, how might this be handled?
Again, I think it's a trial basis. We would like to try to handle your reservations first and try, you know, again, we have a new, new ADA coordinator involved. If we, we tried to emphasize on the policy, it's to everybody's advantage to fill out the form that you're interested in training and get it to us early in the process so that we can process it and get registrations in early before deadlines. All I can say is that we can try it and, again, there is wiggle room. If we're running into major problems, we can adjust, you know, and we would adjust. Maybe we'll have, after a year, give a little report as to, if there's any modifications to the policy. But we would like to attempt to try solving your problems first.
Sounds good to me. Just, I would hope that there are no problems, but having had that experience before, it's just, I wanted to make you all aware of the kinds of issues that have come up.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ralph, I see that you have a travel training policy for, that we could look at for guidelines, but I didn't see it in the packet anywhere. So where would we see that?
Yeah, you should have received the draft policy, Randy. Is that what you mean?
In the packet?
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't see.
In the work session packet or work session materials, there's a draft policy.
The policy, well, I see the elected officials thing, but I didn't, I didn't see.
Yeah, it's, it's for elected officials. Yes, I can give you a copy as well.
No, he's looking at, that's what he's looking at, the elected officials' travel and training policy. That's, that's.
I was thinking that was something else.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yes, I, I like the, the way the policy is worded and that you have a separate conference registration form and also an expense report. I was wondering if it would be appropriate that once the expenses have been approved administratively, that something appear in the consent agenda, since these are taxpayer dollars, even though we have a line item in our budget for reimbursement for travel and conferences, that something be included in the consent agenda as routine business just for full disclosure for the public and also for us. And it wouldn't need to include the details of, the breakdown of everything, but just the synopsis of the lodging, travel, and any meal, meal reported so that we know what's going on and the public knows what's going on.
We could add that. I did see some similar wordings in other policies to that effect. I, you know, in regular meeting, we could have maybe a friendly amendment and add, and add that language.
I think Rita had a question.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I assume that there are points in conference registration where the rates go up.
Yes.
If you don't register by a certain point. So should there be something in this document that indicates that you need to register by a certain time and maybe if they're, if you're late, that maybe that is your, your problem and not, not, not the council or the borough problem?
I tried to cover that. I think that's in there somewhere. I don't remember right offhand what section. Let me just take a look here.
I did see some date, dates mentioned, but I didn't know if that was specifically for registration or if it was for.
What, the policy, it was just, it's kind of general on dates, but in Section 6 Procedures, it says boroughs, let me see, if elected officials request accommodations that are above and beyond the single rate, preferred, special room block rate offerings, and then another slash, past the early bird special rate deadlines, the difference in cost will be borne by the elected official.
Okay.
So again, that, that's kind of out of some other policies that I saw. So we, soon as we know of a conference, like we know there's one in June coming up, we'll, we'll get the registration, get the word out to you and look, get the registration forms and look to get those back, you know, way before the deadlines.
Just a curiosity question. If a person is not asking for reimbursement, we don't have to deal with this at all, correct?
That, that's correct. This actually says something to that effect. This is only when reimbursement is expected. Yes.
I'd like to thank the borough staff for putting this together because I think it was very well done. So thank you for that.
Sure.
Alyssa, Ralph, Don, Julie. And, you know, I think it's pretty straightforward what we're looking at here. I mean, what sort of conferences do we really have a choice at on this council? Most of the time, it's PSAB. It's pretty straightforward. Either you're going or you're not. And if you meet the deadline, if you file the request to attend, you shouldn't have any problem getting a room. So just meet the deadline that's specified in it and, and you should be good to go.
You're watching CNET, Center County's Government and Educational Access Network.
I'd like to call the Bellefonte Borough Business Meeting to order. I can begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Benir.
Present.
Mr. Brackbill.
Present.
Ms. Clayton.
Here.
Ms. Stan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean. Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
I'm here.
Mr. Larson.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Mr. President, apparently we can't, they can't hear you back there. Can you move your mic a little closer or turn it on? Do I have any public comment? Anybody here tonight like to get up and speak? Come on up and state your name and address, please, and you shall be heard.
Thank you. I'm Sharon Weiser. I live at 387 Pine Street, and I'm not here to talk about Pine Street. I'm talking about public transportation. I have read about the, I read about the January 10th meeting that Don was present and so were Spring Township, Brenner Township, Center Transportation, and CADA. Without, I'm not going to tell you everything I think about CADA, thinking that they can increase their charges tenfold. That's disgusting to me and I'll just leave it at that. I want to tell you the importance as a Bellefonte resident of having public transportation. I started using public transportation 15 years ago for the simple reason to save money. I was a single parent and 15 years ago, the gas price going up or threatening to go up to $4 a gallon was a big deal. So I thought I'd try it, not realizing, I tried it for a week. My daughter and I thought, yep, this is going to work. So I kept doing it, not realizing that, oh yeah, there's a lot of people that do this every day. They go to work by bus. And so I met a lot of people and I learned, there's a lot of different reasons people take the bus. By choice, to save money. We had, I've met post docs from other countries that were just here for a year, they didn't have a car. I've met people who lost their license because of DUI. I've met disabled people. I've met people who use it because they care for the environment, you know, using one vehicle instead of 10 cars to get to work. All sorts of reasons, all different types of people from, from different backgrounds. So to tell you more about myself, 21 years ago about, I was diagnosed with multiple sclerosis. Most people can't tell to look at me because it has affected my brain in the area of language. If you've heard the term aphasia, that affects me. But I've been able to work until four years ago. I had a relapse, it was very bad. I worked in an office at Penn State. I worked on analytical records and reports and the computer all the time and I wasn't able to do it anymore. So I'm, I had to retire on disability. So now I need public transportation. Now this CADA go door-to-door, yeah, well, that's a treat because I was used to taking the big bus, you know, walking down to the Y to take, I was fine with that. This door-to-door seemed like a good idea. I've been liking it, except the part about there may be other people on the bus who now know where I live. So that's kind of, if we got rid of CADA, I wouldn't be totally upset with that as long as we had some kind of public transportation for people who need it, like me, or people who want it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have public comment out in? Anybody else in council? Yes, Joanne?
Okay. The, I'm putting a different hat on my head right now. These, I chair the Center County Advisory Council to the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. The advisory council on behalf of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission will be holding an educational training on ADA and public accommodations this Thursday, January 18th at 7:15 PM. Meredith Milliard, who's the chief counsel for the PHRC, will be making a virtual presentation to government officials and administrators interested in learning more about the practical applications of the ADA in their involvement with the public and their employees. Julie Brooks has already confirmed that she will be attending on behalf of the borough. If any of you are, are interested, please contact me and I'll send you the Zoom link. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Additional public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to communications. Mr. Stewart?
First one is the speed limit sign issue on Pine Street and Stony Batter. It's just that, no action requested. Second one is the letter about CADA and the costs for fiscal year '24. No action tonight.
Hey, Ralph.
Yes?
May I make a comment on that? Just for Ms. Weiser, just to make sure that everyone is aware and it isn't, I don't know if it'll come up, but CADA is having a public hearing on the changes and that hearing will be held in this room. I believe it's January the 24th. You might need to go to their website or they, they should advertise. They didn't have the exact date when we met, but I do know that there is a meeting that's going to be held here. So for anyone that is interested, that's the date. You may know the date and time exact.
I know it's January 24th, but I don't know the time. Does anybody heard what the time might be? And I think once we find that out, I would like to see it put on the website.
Sorry. I just, without getting into the real details of it, how long has CADA been providing contract service to the borough of Bellefonte? How many years?
Well, I wasn't here then, but my understanding was in, somewhere in the 1980 timeframe, 80 decade, the county had requested CADA service come to Bellefonte. And somewhere in that work, Bellefonte started to be a contractor with CADA.
So it's been at least 35 years?
Yes.
Ever take?
Yes.
Okay. During that time, the line item in the budget for CADA service has been pretty consistent. It goes up approximately 5% a year. So it's been in the $20,000 to $25,000 range every year, more or less.
That is correct.
Okay. Based on Mr. Richel's cost per revenue hour, the fixed root service costs about $118 per revenue hour. The CADA go costs about $68 per revenue hour. Over all those years of service, was CADA billed anything above and beyond that $25,000?
CADA sends out the invoice. One is operating, one is capital.
Right.
The total is about $25,000.
Okay, so for all those years of fixed root service that costs more than the ride share that we. that we have now. The borough's contribution has covered CADA's request?
Yes.
I don't understand why.
That, that, that's where the, we, what we found out at the meeting, they, and this is why I suggest that you come to the public hearing, Deb, because you'll hear what I heard, and that is, is that they were absorbing their losses. And they were able to do that during all, all those years, evidently, they were able to do it. But ever since COVID and ridership changes and everything and the cost, they can no, they're not, they can no longer absorb the cost. So that's why he's reflecting what the actual cost is. But you, you need to hear it from them.
Okay. Because also, I'm, I'm concerned about the short notice on this and that we're expected to make a rational, educated decision in two weeks. That doesn't make any sense to me, and...
I can only tell you that that's for their budgeting purposes. They, obviously, they didn't meet our budgeting timeline, but they're asking us to meet theirs.
Okay. I, yes, I understand about the public hearing, but this is, I will maintain my ladylike composure and not say anything else.
Good. I'll continue here. There's an invitation to attend the Bellefonte Emergency Medical Services Training Session for elected officials. It's this, or Thursday, February 27th at 7:00 PM over at the EMS facility on Phoenix Avenue. It's just FYI this evening. I believe that's all we have under written communications.
Moving on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be acted upon in one single motion. I'd like to call for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Blackbill?
Second. Tosti Vacy.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Blackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Next is the reports. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, I do. I, I would just like to spotlight and thank everybody in Public Works. I know we've dealt with a lot of weather as of recent. You know, they're, they're keeping the roads passable. They're doing what they can. You know, they're working in the cold temperatures, the rain, the snow. So it's very much appreciated. And just a reminder for our community to keep your sidewalks shoveled, you know, help a neighbor out if, if they're not able, and if you, if you are, lend a helping hand. And remember to slow down and drive safe within the borough and everywhere during bad weather. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Other reports? Police? Chief?
All right. So you do not have a police report. I was, the reason for that is because I was at a 40-hour training this week. So you will be getting December's report and January's report next meeting. So the, the training I was at is pretty unique. It's called CIT. It's called Crisis Intervention Team Model, or Crisis Intervention Training, but it's for the crisis intervention team. This began 1988 in Memphis PD. They started this, and ours is modeled after Memphis. Probably started because of some tragic event that happened in Memphis. So it's a partnership between the Memphis PD and the National Alliance on Mental Illness and Mental Health Professionals and Advocates. In 2010, Center County started theirs. We sent eight, or eight people down to Memphis and got trained. Since 2010, over 500 people have been trained in Center County on CIT to include every police department, sheriff's department, 911 dispatchers, district attorneys, 911 dispatchers, probation officers, people that work at the jails, and other mental health professionals, and also EMTs is involved, or the emergency medical services is involved. So it's a 40-hour comprehensive training on emphasizing on mental health-related topics, crisis resolution skills, and developing them, and de-escalation techniques. And also, a big part of it is to how can we access community-based services that, that are here in Center County, which there's quite a few of them. So the goals of the CIT is to improve the interactions between law enforcement and those people with mental illness, to prevent the inappropriate restraint, incarceration, and stigmatism of persons with mental illness, and also to reduce injuries to officers, family members, and individuals who are in crisis. So I can tell you that I've been at the police office for 27 years, and this town, we deal with crisis on a weekly basis. These two gentlemen back here, probably twice a week, we're dealing with people, they can tell you, we're dealing with people in crisis mode. I thought I knew it all going into this, after all my experience here, but I picked up a lot of things. One thing is I picked up about autism and how each person with autism responds differently to individual stimuli, and one of them is law enforcement or shiny badges. That could really, you know, put someone with autism over the deep end, and would seem to us they're being disrespectful or defiant, but that's how they are. So I just want to let you know, the reason why the report isn't done is for a good one. And I know that our department has over 90% of its officers trained CIT. They wear little badges on their uniforms that identifies them as a CIT member. So, any questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Gina?
Good evening, council. I too do not have a report for you. I was out sick last week. So at the next meeting, I'll have my OCA, Office of Commute Affairs memo. I did just want to let you know that, and the public to know, that the next hard meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 23rd at 8:30 AM in council chambers. We are still meeting there, just because of technology needs. And then the Planning Commission will meet on Monday, February 12th at 5:00 PM in this room in the Armory Building. And then also, there is a Nittany Valley Joint Planning Commission meeting this Thursday, January 18th at Spring Township, and that begins at 6 o'clock. And I just, again, I'll have a more thorough update for your next meeting, but there is some forward progress with the historic guidelines update. You know, I'm, I'm communicating and planning meetings with Landmarks SGA, so they'll be doing some site visits coming up real soon here. So, any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Gina. Anybody else? The reports were submitted. You have them in your packet. Please, on reports are there. The others have any other comments? Joanne?
I just have a clarification question for Ralph. Under your, the first item under your report was the DOJ, DOJ great agreement. Their section was called Closed Captioning Mandates Notice to CNET Regarding Terminating Coverage. I think I know what this means, but I want to make sure I understand it. Does this mean that CNET has been officially notified that we will be terminating the coverage? Or does this mean that in December you decide to put this option on the table for discussion at our meetings for this year?
Counsel tabled that action about sending a notice to CNET, so that's still tabled.
Okay.
I was just reporting that we are communicating with the DOJ Administrator. I don't have a final settlement amendment, but it looks positive. So I noted that in my report. I'd like maybe till, maybe till the next meeting to see, give you an update.
Okay.
And maybe someone would untable the motion, or it would just...
I, I kind of thought that's what it was, but I just wanted to be absolutely clear for ourselves and for the public.
Thank you. Sure.
Anybody else with questions or about the reports? Okay. Going to move along to current and old business. Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection is requiring an alternate sewage enforcement officer be appointed to Bellefonte Borough for the year 2024. I'll need a motion and a second to appoint Jeff Craigor as an alternate sewage enforcement officer for 2024.
So moved. Tosti Vacy.
Second. Dan?
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Blackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Volunteer applications. David Lamison, Michael Schmidt, and Michael Scott. But there's no action required. The other item here is about closed captioning mandates and notices to CNET regarding terminating coverages. Staff is discussing possible amendments to the settlement agreement with the DOJ Administrator. Another conference call was planned. All implementation deadlines have been extended. No council action is required at this time. New business. A memo from the Assistant Borough Manager. If you wanted to talk about that some more, Dawn?
I'll answer any questions if anyone has any.
Relative to CADA. Have you asked any questions? Okay. Also in your packet is a memo regarding the community yard sale, riffraff, Halloween, and holiday parking in the borough. Proposed dates are as follows. The yard sale dates, Friday and Saturday, May 10th and 11th. Bulk waste riffraff pickup, Monday through Friday, May 13th through the 17th. Halloween trick-or-treating is scheduled for October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Two-hour courtesy parking program, Friday, November 29th, 2024, through Wednesday, January 1st, 2025. I need a motion and a second to approve the dates provided for the community yard sale riffraff, Halloween, and holiday parking in Bellefonte Borough.
So moved. Blackbill?
Second. Dan?
Thank you.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Blackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, appointment of Dawn Townsend to Civil Service Commission. Dave Provan is stepping down. Dawn is currently the alternate. So I'll need a motion and a second to appoint Dawn.
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion to approve Donald Townsend to the Civil Service Commission in place of Dave Provan.
I'll second that. Clayton?
Thank you.
Oops. I have a question.
Go ahead, Joanne.
Is there a volunteer application on file for Dawn?
Yes, been on file for three months.
Okay.
He was approved as an alternate.
Okay.
And she went in.
Okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Blackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes. And I have one question related to this, or request. Since the alternate position is now open, can we have that posted on the website? Thank you.
Okay. Next is, I need a motion and a second to pay John Clark Escavating for the Parkview Heights Storm Water Management Project.
So moved. Dan?
Second. Sedgwick.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Blackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Draft ordinance authorizing Logan Fire Company number one and the Undines Fire Company number two to remit invoices to insurance carriers for services rendered. A motion and a second to advertise the drafted ordinance authorizing the fire companies to remit invoices to insurance carriers for services rendered.
So moved. Tosti Vacy.
Second. Dan?
Thank you.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Blackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is the travel training policy, which was discussed at the work session, the draft. I need a motion and a second to approve the elected official travel training policy as presented, or with amendments approved by council.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Second. Tosti Vacy.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Blackbill?
I have one question before we get too, too far gone here. I noticed in the, on those forms that it doesn't call out the PSAB. So, you know, it looks like it's leaving it open for other opportunities, but I'm not sure that's the case.
No, the, the forms say that they're in compliance with the policy. The policy does say PSAB, and then even on the bottom of the form, it says if you're serving on a committee of PSAB, you have to get reimbursement through them first if you have any kind of arrangement like that. But the policy says PSAB.
I'd like to follow up with a related question. When I'm looking at that same form at the top, it doesn't say who it's for. I would like to see an extra line on that saying, what conference are you going to? For, so for example, with PSAB, there's like three or four different ones they have during the year, and there may be something else so that if you're requesting for something outside of PSAB, you know what, what is being requested. And so that would be written down at that point.
Well, the policy as it's written says what the authorizing authorities are, I think it's Section 2, let me just bring that up here. Section 2 says approving authorities, and I'm going to get to the end here, misses require, the, the, oh, the elected officials or the purpose as shown below is hereby approved. And it says any conferences or training events of Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs. And then, the only other thing it says is any conferences or training events that are specifically listed in the adopted budget. These are the only approved conferences you can go to. What it, with the exception of going to Borough Council and asking, but the policy is, and our finance director, we would not process anything other than what's approved under Section 2.
So basically, what I'm asking for, and I think possibly this is what Randy was asking for as well, is a little bit of redundancy, that although it's written in the policy, if we could just have one line and say, what conference is this? That's all I'm asking.
Well, we, we can do that. We made a generic form that has the conference blank. You fill it in, your name, the location. We can, we can custom, customize the form for each training conference. There is only two main training conferences throughout the year, so we can customize the form and send that out when we give you notice. We can do that. It's not a problem.
So do I have a motion and a second?
Do you already have that? Just ask if there's any other questions, and we'll take the vote.
No other questions or comments. We're going to take a vote on the policy that was presented at the work session.
We'll start over here. Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Blackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is the dog park, which was also discussed at the work session. So we have two motions in front of us here, or two options. One is a motion and a second to continue the plans slash discussions related to the dog park in Bellefonte Borough, or the other option is a motion and a second to end the plans and discussions about the dog park.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion to end the plans and discussion related to establishing a dog park in Bellefonte Borough at this time.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Can we have a quick discussion before we vote?
Sure. Discussion.
My only concern is by quashing it at this point, we don't have a chance to have those questions that Shawna asked and to actually see a plan and see if there is actually something viable there. If not, I, I don't have a dog. This is not going to affect me one way or the other. But we have had 500, how many have people, he said, I've been?
115.
115 people in the borough who are interested in this. I think we should at least give him a chance to present the plan, his fleshed-out plan before we completely shut it down. So if we keep the mission this way, I'm going to say nay, just because I believe that we need to give him a chance to do, since he didn't see the email originally. And if there is a plan, and we may change our mind, that would be okay. And if, then if we still feel that, as most of you have said on council, that it may be a safety or liability issue, so be it. But I think we should give at least one more chance before we do that.
Yes, Ms. Purnell.
I'm just wondering, if we vote to end it now, that doesn't mean that it couldn't be brought back up again in the future, does it?
If the council so desires.
So voting no now doesn't totally kill it. It would just say, just not now.
Right. That's all it's doing. Yes, Joanna?
According to Robert's rules, if we want to bring it back after it's being tabled, someone who voted on the side of the majority would then have to ask for reconsideration. So yes, you are right, that it could be brought back, but it has to be brought off the table from someone.
Let's take a vote on the motion that's in front of us right now. We had a motion and a second to end.
Yeah.
Any other?
Excuse me, I was just going to ask, what is the motion?
So the motion and the second was to end the plans and discussions related to the dog park in Bellefonte Borough at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ready?
Yep.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
No.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
No.
Thank you. The next item is the Pine Street Stony Batter. It's a motion, a motion and a second to convey to PennDOT any state Route 144 concerns and complaints.
I'll make that motion, Clayton.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. So we're conveying, what we're going to vote on is we're going to convey it to PennDOT, any state Route 144 concerns and complaints.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
And then there's a second part to this, if I'm seeing this correctly. A motion and a second to request an LTAP study of stony batter related to signage improvements.
So moved, Tosti Vacy.
I'll second that, Clayton.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you. Those are all the items on the agenda.
Mr. President.
Yes.
There is still an item, the 2024 Goals Action Items. What I'd like to do is remove the dog park for Bellefonte at this time.
Would it be okay if we just put complete or something? Or you just want to take it off altogether?
Yeah, I mean, if it comes back up, it comes back up. I think for now, we take it out.
Okay.
That's my motion. I don't have a second yet.
So Mr. Brackville has a motion to have it, have the dog park taken off of the goals and objectives for 2024. He would need a second for that.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean. Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
No.
With that, that brings us to the adjournment. I'll need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved, Brackville.
Thank you.
Second, Dan.
Thank you. We have an executive session.
No one in our community should worry about where their next meal is coming from. Yet the stark reality is that, right now, thousands of Center County residents are struggling to afford food for themselves and their families. For 40 years, the State College Food Bank has been responding with compassion and commitment, providing free food to individuals and families across Center County. There are no income qualifications to receive groceries, which are distributed three days a week through our pantry.